Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call this meeting to order at 7:01 with the adoption of the agenda. Is there anything, any additions?
Madam Mayor, administration has no additions to the agenda.
Okay, any other additions? Could I have someone move to adopt?
All good.
Counselor Morgan. All in favor? Carry it. I sent out my mayor's report. Does anyone have any questions? Oh, sorry. Did I jump over that?
Yeah.
I didn't want to do that. So the minutes of the May 25 meeting. Is there any errors, submissions?
All in the minutes.
Deputy Mayor moves a minute. All in favor? Carry it. Now on to my report. Is there any questions? I know it's a lengthy report, but... Okay, could I have someone move to accept it now? Counselor Anderson, all in favor? Carry it. Deputy Mayor?
On May 26, I attended the ready board meeting. June 3, the meeting with the towns council regarding the RSSA mediation session. June 5 was the mediation and then June 11, a city working group meeting and then the Ruben Alberta elected leaders meeting, both of which are in my mayor's report.
Any questions for the deputy mayor? Did you hear what I heard?
Depends what you heard.
At the nail meeting.
Oh, from Mr. Mayor?
Yeah. Good, I thought maybe I was hearing. Okay. Counselor Anderson?
June 3, the Ramat to the meeting with the county and June 5, the meeting with the county. I don't have much else.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Jesselman?
June 3, the county meeting, June 5, the actual day of the mediation, and June 9, the High Level Pre-6 Society meeting.
Do you have anything to report from there?
We have our program manager, Darla, her to step down, keep moving on to another opportunity in her career, I think she moved to Edmonton, and we asked one of our other staff members to step up and into acting and we're going to be focusing on the conceivability victim services group, so we'll be short on them. We are full, it's been the longest time that we've had a full complement of staff, which is nice, so it is a long process getting the applications submitted to the RCP for security clearance, so probably two to three months before we do have candidates apply and clear the security clearance. We were notified by the Human Rights Commission that we were successful in our case that was against the society and our response was in three days, I think we had a response back from once we submitted, so we're very happy about that, so that's it for us.
That's good. Thank you. Counselor Morgan?
On May 26, I attended the High Level Municipal Library Board meeting. We are slowly starting to work our way back towards reopening the library. Our library assistant has decided to retire, so we'll be in the market for a new library assistant. May 27, I attended the same Kensee Frontier Tourism Association meeting as the mayor did, it was super exciting. I love talking about tourism. Hopefully, we can keep people in the region and encourage people to come to the region. June 3, I attended the pre-mediation meeting, as already been discussed, and June 5, I attended the RSSA mediation with the rest of council. That is all I have to report.
I see the municipal library has a tortoise.
You have a tortoise?
Yes.
That's what it says in the paper.
Probably age, probably have a new pet, yeah.
A pet from the library? Like a real tortoise?
Yes.
A baby?
The tortoise that this baby, yeah.
That can live for 50 years or more.
150 years.
I remember having some discussions about a pet, but huh, that's an interesting one.
There, yeah. You're gonna really have to wash your hands.
Yeah. No, those are frogs that give you words.
No, it's not, it's salmonella. So maybe I could direct this to Director Rol. Has come across your desk anything about posters, et cetera, for Rumble Alberta?
My mask, I can't remember. Not posters per se, but we did ask about our business being involved and having surprises out and I know that our events coordinator is working on that right now.
Okay.
So I can't remember exactly what the final decision was, but they were working with along having some different incentives for town.
Okay. I was just, because that was something that came out of our meeting, I was actually talking to businesses about it, and Jenna had said that the tourism coordinator, summer student, that's something that he could be doing, so...
Yeah, absolutely, and I think they were looking at having like one of the hotels offer like free rooms, which they've done for access to the NWT, so I think they might be looking at doing something along that lines to encourage people to stay the night and visit our new hotel.
Okay, thank you. And Counselor Welke?
Just the pre-mediation meeting, June 3, and then the actual mediation, June 5. That's all I have to report.
I see the FASD is having a general meeting?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow?
Yeah.
Is it virtual?
Yes, as far as I know.
Okay.
It's still via Zoom.
Okay. Any questions for Counselor Welke? Okay. Could I have someone move council committee reports in?
All move the reports.
Counselor Welke, all in favor? Carry it. On to council's action list. Any questions? I have a couple. Oh, did you have any?
I was just gonna ask where we're at with the rodeo grounds.
Madam Mayor?
Pardon me? We're, so thank you for the question, Counselor Morgan. The, I'd like to say we're finished. We finished the final grading of it this weekend, and I believe they're seating yesterday and today, so I would say once the, well, once the grass grows, we're done. It looks really good. I was out with CIO Gasco this morning, we had a look at it, feel free to drive over, I think it looks exceptional. We're finished. That's my question.
Okay. Can we remove the Economic Developers Conference from the action list?
Yeah, I don't think there will be any further action on that with setting, and I think, you and Chief Anna say you did your presentation at FCM anyway, so if council so wishes, we can close that out.
Thank you. Does council so wish?
So wish.
Do you need a motion?
It's the action list.
Yeah.
Okay.
And the other? You can adopt it with that removal.
What's that?
You can adopt it, you can remove that.
With the next one, with the water service agreement with the DNE, is that to change then? Am I understanding that, Keith?
Yeah, we'll bring that back to you when we do the MOU, because we need to update that agreement.
Yes, Madam Mayor, the agreement was solely for the purpose of water, and since then, the DNE wishes you could connect a summoner system to our sewer, so we'll have to adopt the agreement to the rest of it.
So that can be removed as well?
Well, we will do, Madam Mayor, is when we adopt the MOU with the DNE for their services, we can update the motion.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Oh, can I have a motion there? Deputy Mayor, all in favor? Carry it. The project capital status report. Any questions? Can you tell us who won the tender, or no?
Which tender?
Actually, it's in your in-camera session.
Pardon me?
For Gateway Goldberg?
Yeah.
It's in your in-camera session.
But it's not in there?
We have a handout.
Okay.
That was late Friday afternoon.
Okay, so, but I thought I missed it.
Yep. Madam Mayor, the tenders closed Friday and revealed on today.
Okay.
I don't want to announce publicly until we've informed the contract.
Okay. I got you. Could I have someone move the capital project status report?
Don't move the capital.
Counselor Welke, all in favor? Carry it.
Oh, did you?
Well, I don't...
Are there any questions, Madam Mayor?
Is there any questions? I have a question in our utilities. Why are they going, why are the uncollectibles going up?
Madam Mayor, it's, the increase was $3,900 from March. My, we don't really, there's not really a reason. What we found in the last couple of runs is that if there was a read on a meter that needed to be investigated, et cetera, because of COVID restrictions, residences weren't allowing our guys to go into the home, so we would have to put another request in for the next month, so we found a couple of those, but nothing major. There was no major reasons online it was going up. We are at a time now where we can put our disconnection notices in, where in the wintertime we couldn't because of our bylaws, so that's, I don't really have a sound reason, it just fluctuates month to month. We're usually around a 20, 25% where we are going, so...
Aren't these remote reads, Keith?
Yes, Madam Mayor, the meter itself sits inside the house, it has a radio frequency, but anytime there's a battery issue or the meter may fail, we have to air the property to do the inspection to make sure it's functioning as well as hasn't been damaged.
And the taxation, that, like, the reason that's so high is because, is that the monthly, people paying monthly?
For the current year balance of the 165.
Right.
Majority of that is, it does include the pre-authorized payments owing, but a lot of, we found a lot of with our outstanding, with the new ones, we won't have, we have about $88,000 or $90,000 is our land sale for one property, so a lot of our properties, I think it was $156,000 was just for the land sale properties, so those are included in there as well. I think I highlighted those in the March financials, but again, it's more so just an ongoing process to try to get those bills paid and up to date. We did some advertising this month, it went out in the newspaper and went out on our website to encourage people to do pre-authorized payments, just so we can have more of a constant income for that and to encourage people that, your penalty exempt if you enter into those pre-authorized payment agreements, which I found was very, the public received it very well. We've been getting a lot of calls and we, so I feel like hopefully we get there, but it's something that I guess we can't really control and it fluctuates, so...
Can I make a request?
Yes.
That included in the finances at council meeting to have, especially when we're asking to take money out of general reserves and reserves, that we have a reserve list?
Yeah.
Like our reserves on there?
Yeah.
Because it's starting to frighten me that our reserves are going down, yet we continue to have requests to take money out of our reserves?
Yeah, I can include an updated list.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there any other questions? Could I have someone move the capital project status report then?
Financial report?
Or financial report?
I'm the financial report.
Thank you. All in favor? So the next ones are the administrative reports.
Madam Mayor, the report is in your package. If you have any questions, say it's all to a individual or two.
I have a question if nobody else does.
I ask my question.
My question's to Director Rol. I'm really excited about this indigenous sports council running the Blue Jay camp. And this camp will be eight weeks, what eight-week period are we looking at?
July and August in the evenings.
Okay, July and August in the evening?
I think it's either Tuesday, I think it's Tuesday, Thursday evening. So we have a series of people that are volunteering, working with one of our staff, and it's like a camp program that they set up, and they send out ball equipment and Blue Jay shirts for the participants. Yeah, so it sounds like a really good, really good program. It was originally set up to be within COVID guidelines, but we may be able to sort of live on it and maybe play a few games and that sort of thing, but it's set up so that the individuals can still get some ball in and have like space between them and that sort of thing, so part of it is there's online wording that will have the coaches involved in, and yeah, it's just something different without the try.
Has there been a request for coaches yet?
For that particular, yeah, and you've had the response.
Okay. I didn't see the request for coaches, but I was wondering, there's different age groups, right?
There is, yeah. As to how it's set up specifically, I couldn't tell you.
Okay.
It's a wide range, but I don't know whether they have different kinds altogether, different, I haven't looked at the specific program.
Is it listed on our page yet, or?
Yeah, it's been advertised, yeah, I think we've got.
Okay. As you can see, I don't want to. All right, thank you. Is there any, do you have a question?
I wonder if we can get an update for the July, or the candidate weekend, long weekend, the events, the parade stuff?
Oh, Madam Mayor, that's item 133 on my, sorry. Which also contains requests for council to sign up.
I think I have another. How the heck did a rock hit into the Amber Heights lift station?
I have no idea.
Was it flushed down a toilet, or?
It could have been down a basement, lot plate, or anything, and it was a fair-sized rock and it stopped, bumped, fell. It happens, I could explain a few other things we saw, but I'll leave that.
Yeah, I've heard, thanks. All right, that's my questions. Can I have someone move the administrative reports?
All move.
Counselor Anderson, all in favor? Carry it. 12-1, the RFD for the multipurpose facility final design.
Madam Mayor, Director Rol, first presentation for council and the public.
Well, good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. You've already asked me a few questions, so you warmed me up already.
Yeah.
So I'm pretty excited to present our final design for the multipurpose facility. So we've received a detailed design development report, has both indexes as well as the schematic design, so I'm just going to go through things in a little more detail than we may have in the past. Is there a particular spot that I could stand? Yeah? Or right here? So I just push the arrow, right?
Yes, it should move along, it may be a little bit forward.
Oh, should I be back even?
It may, it may help.
Or just ask Charles to pass this slide.
Would you want to just advance?
I will.
Next slide, please. So what I'm gonna talk to, talk to council tonight is about the Class B estimate and then the actual design, which includes the site plan, program areas, parking drainage, the building ambient finishing materials. We'll have a quick look at the schematics and the renderings and then talk about the project status. Since the schematic design is issued, the design has been continually developed and formalized with input and coordination from the town subconsultant groups and as well as had several state leader meetings. The schematic design report contained many cases, questions that remain to be answered, and we have now answered them in this design development report, and it provides a much clearer picture of the project's requirements. The drawing set that we received with this is to resemble a contract document drawing set that will be developed if the project funding is achieved and we move forward. There may not be everything captured in total detail, but it's pretty well relevant to, it gives us a good idea of what we have moving forward. Next slide, please. So for our Class B estimate, we actually hired a separate subconsultant, so our prime architect had six or seven consultants that worked directly for them. The cost consultant, we hired separately ourselves, just to make sure that we're being accountable. So in this estimate, there shows that there's a design allowance for 4%, and 4% of 8 million is quite a bit, that allows for design changes during the development of the design. Once we're actually at tender stage, this should go to zero, it would be something that would continue on. This includes a contingency allowance for location and mobilization at 40%. That's somewhat higher, I think, than we normally have used in projects previously. I think our directors are often, they're looking at 35%, so that is a certain mobilization cost. One of the things that's different is an escalation cost for COVID risk reserve. We'll probably talk about this a little bit later tonight, but what they're finding is with COVID, there's been issues with supplies, issues with getting contract people into work, and prices have just escalated up and down just rapidly. I mean, we've seen it in our lumber, but it's in other areas too, so they have just put in another risk logistics to cover that as well. Generally, since our schematic design, the big change was when we got a geotechnical, we had to move the structural slab. That was additional cost of about 1.9 million, so that made a fair amount of difference. In addition, there was, with our backup generators, they hadn't anticipated that, having generators run an entire facility for three days, and it came in a lot higher. generators to run the entire facility for three days, and it came in a lot higher expense than was originally anticipated. I think we were originally looking at about three hundred thousand, it came in at one point two million. The, um, architects went back and made a few changes, but we're still looking at, um, about eighty eight million for the actual construction prior to all the contingencies. So. Next slide, please. Can you, do you have a better picture in front of me there than when I turn it up?
Clearer, yeah.
Yeah, it's way clearer.
Okay. So for the site plan, um, so this shows the subdivisions that, um, we actually have them approved and they're sent out to adjacent landowners. Should have been comeback Friday, so as far as I know, that should be going through. So we'll be looking at our final, um, documentation and having the final survey done. We're working on the legal exchange for the land and, um, the geotechnical's complete, the environmental's complete, topographical's complete. This gives you an idea of parking. So in the end, we actually have the building, it'll, it'll be classified as a standalone construction. Prior to that, we had it backed onto the school, and I don't know if Council remembers what we talked about, um, if we needed to have, um, a firewall or if we needed to have additional sprinkler system put in the school gym. So because we moved this as a standalone building and it's going to have a connected corridor, um, that no longer applies, so we did save some money there. How long is the corridor? Uh, off my head, I'm not sure. I know the, follow the square meters and everything, but I don't know the actual distance, so it's hard to judge from there, but I can get back to you on that. Um, so we will have to have a joint access agreement from both owners for that link, because it'll be partially owned, the property, on the new property that the town owns, it'll be partially owned, the school property. Looking at the different phases there, so the phase one, immediate project site, um, that shows you your parking and your, uh, contest, where your pedestrian connection is connected to. That includes about two hundred parking stalls. Phase two is, uh, is the section there that will be, um, the other side of the pool there. That'll be, uh, the new street, a hundred, so right right down the middle there, and then that'll be parking. And then eventually we'll have the phase where the, the school bus loop is, that'll be developed, there'll be some additional parking within there, still using the school bus loop. And then phase four is when we eventually demolish the pool. So that'll give us adequate parking for the entire facility.
Question, the, so the bus loop is staying, it would just be additional parking getting off hours?
Yeah, well, additional parking that can be, there's like quite a large area there, so we can use like the inside and outside of them, so that we can make use of what's already there. Next slide, please. Um, so parking a drainage, this is a bit tedious, but, um, maybe what I can, yeah, I'll go through it anyways. So there's a, a primary lane by the front of the building, and so that's where the drop off and pickoff could be for passenger vehicles and buses. So that's in addition to the bus loop at the bottom. So you're talking about when there's big tournaments and hockey tournaments and stuff, and buses are coming by, they could drop off right at the front and continue back out the other side. That second side that may be going out will actually be school property, so again, we'll have to have, um, the, uh, an agreement on that. We also made, uh, um, uh, for emergency vehicle parking and, um, at the same area where the buses come through at the front and then at the side. Maybe what I'll do is just get you to flip to the next one, because it shows it better in here. Next slide. I don't know, hopefully you guys can see it better, because it's kind of, okay, that's good. So you can see at the, at the very top there, um, facing one of, where the parking comes through there and it actually ends up, it'll be on the, uh, on the school side where the exit is as you come through. The kind of, I don't know what color is on there, but the kind of pinkish part there will be the emergency parking coming through from the other side and around to the back. So there'll be, ambulances will be able to make it through, um, where the main entrance is for the, uh, the pool and the right to the side there. I think it's kind of hard to see from there, but anyway, right? Next slide.
They, it's still on the screen.
Yeah, is it? Oh, okay.
It's just the projector.
Oh, okay.
And we have that in our package as well.
Yeah, it's a little bit hard to read, there's a little bit fade there. So, um, with the program areas and, um, architects have talked about this before, just, um, the changes from schematic design to, um, the, um, the development design. Most of the changes were, for instance, in, in aquatics, there wasn't changes in, uh, in square footage, but we just added another office. In the, um, in the arena, um, we ended up having the two arenas separated, so an actual wall in between them, so if you had like a, a junior A game on the arena, the arena on the one side that the curly rate would be quiet on the other side, so there'll actually be a wall between them, but you can go back and forth across the top into the curly rate lounge. And then we added the commercial kitchen, um, which we didn't have before. So there is a commercial kitchen, um, on the side that won't affect the retail space, but if, case of emergency, we can, we'll have our kitchen. So that was another change. Next slide. This is so hard, I can't even see what I'm doing, but that's okay. So for the building outlook. So there's, um, the assemblies are both transparent and opaque and, um, they've been, chosen primarily for their high through performance, and we'll talk a little bit later about, um, how that filters into, um, our energy savings in the end. The walls are insulated metal, metal panels, um, and, uh, the glazing is clear. For the roofs, they have, um, highly insulated exterior insulation systems that have two different membranes proposed, and, um, I had to look this up because I hadn't heard of them, so they have a TPO, which is a thermoplastic, um, poly, polyethylene, uh, membrane, which can shift from solid material to a semi-solid state. I thought that was pretty neat. And, um, the other one is the SBS, which is modified butaman. I think the next, when you see the next slide, it kind of gives you a better idea of what you're looking at. And then switch to the next slide. So here you can see the, um, the panels. They also have also clad, um, in addition to the patterned, patterned insulated metal panel, um, there's also a wood grain, uh, cladding, so it's still metal, but it's just done in a different type of cladding to give it a different appearance. So this is our main entry, um, showing the lobby's a two-story space with abundance of glass. I just think that's a really nice, uh, really nice rendering. And next slide. So some of the finished materials, um, one of the big things that was the gain with the solid slabs of polished concrete. And, um, there's different ways of using the polished concrete, we use it a lot on the main floors, and it comes out really beautiful, we'll show that more in the next rendering. It's a natural material and it's really durable and there's lots of different things that can be done with it. So that was, uh, that was a big win. Sprung wood athletic floor, um, our C O's done a lot of basketball, and that was one of the things he thought was, was really important, to have that in the field house. That's really good for basketball, volleyball, all the high back sports. The running track, um, would just be a regular recreational type track surface. Flock vinyl, which I hadn't, uh, heard of before, um, would be using throughout the building. And then pool deck, there's a kind of roll-on epoxy. Any rate, if we go to the next slide, you can kind of have a better look there at, so you can really see the polished concrete here, with the kind of look you can have. This actual rendering shows the two primary corridors, um, meeting at the main reception desk. And this allows the staff to have that access where there's clear wayfinding and they can see really easy. Hard for me to point things out now. I was gonna, um, the, doesn't help, I say, am I right? The, it's okay. I just, I'll just mention, without getting into details about this, um, this view, is that one of the things that we're also working on is a cultural aspect for the facility. And, um, we use, just for an example, um, a logo here that, um, I think it was for one of the day because youth had made at one time. Not that we're necessarily going to, uh, use that logo, but just to give an example of the different things we can do. Now, you could use something like that, you could embed in the floor. There could be a sculpture in this main, uh, entryways you come in. There's, um, we could display artifacts, we could do neurons, there's lots of different ways we could pull in, uh, different cultural aspects. So going forward, that is one of the things is that now that we start meeting in, in person, is to be getting, working on getting this committee together and going over as to what we'd like to see to pull in different cultures within that facility. I happen to really like that logo, though.
I like it too.
Yeah, I just, I love the colors and it has the hockey sticks and volleyball, at any rate. Next slide, please. So to keep the corridors activated, hopefully my pages are in the right order, it's down there. The strategy is to locate as much interior glazing as possible along the corridor, so long lengths of blank walls have been avoided wherever possible. So this building is very light and bright all the time. This image here highlights the fitness rooms, which will be glazed along the fronts, as well as glazing and views into the arena. The openness is achieved through careful planning, ensuring that all elements such as change rooms or bleachers are not located in these prime locations. So in here, you can see the two elevators, so that's going to help with accessibility. The, the broad, um, stairs that are see-through and you can see some of our retail space behind them, so everything has this openness about it. Um, and again, the reception desk, um, there's a couple things, the desk design is incorporated adjustable height walk stations, so we can maximize flexibility and ergonomics, or if you have anyone that has a disability, they can have the, uh, the height range in the, in the desk, as well as, um, the pool would go down the side and it would be like a turnstile, so we could control that if we have to, but this allows the one person to monitor almost the entire facility, so it's very open, bright, clear wayfinding paths. Next slide, please. So this is, um, the schematic. The one thing I'd like to talk about a bit here, and hopefully you have a broad enough picture there, is the field house. So our field house repurposes into our reception center. And some of the things that we've done in there is there's three fitness rooms as you come in the, um, hallway there. And each fitness room, um, has a sink, you can kind of see it at the top, and then there's also, uh, gender, um, neutral washrooms in each one that can be accessed either one. Those types of things allow for, like what we're just going through right now with the pandemic, they help with if there's certain populations that we need to isolate or need more privacy within a large evacuation, it gives you, um, lots of that, um, that as well. The other thing too is we have the commercial kitchen, so that, which I was going to point out to, runs down the far side, um, the second building from the bottom, this is really awkward, at any rate. So there's a commercial kitchen there. The idea of the commercial kitchen being there is it's ready accessible to the pantry, there's laundry there, um, you can get inside the field house quite easily, but it's not affecting any retail spaces we have, because that wasn't our point, is to, if the retail spaces are able to be up and running and provide food, the idea is that we're not trying to compete with them. We also have the waste and loading, which is right at the bottom there. The one thing that's still in this design is storage, that's that big orange colored space at the bottom, that was originally going to be the mechanical room, but we've now moved, um, uh, the mechanical electrical room, we've moved up to the far side, um, behind the pool on the side of the arenas, and we'll bring the transformer directly from one oh fifth right across into there to save, um, to save funds, and it makes more sense to have your main electricity and power mechanics coming in where you're going to use them the most, which is the arena and the pool, as opposed to, we had everything coming in the back, so we're going to move the backup generators too, or have them come in, um, on a, uh, oh dear, this is being recorded too. I think that's about all I had to say as far as the schematic. And, uh, the next slide, it just shows you upstairs. I don't think there's anything, um, stand out there. So go to the next slide, please, Charles, that's the pool rendering. I think when you can see these renderings, it kind of gives you a better idea of what you're actually looking at, so. So the torian includes three separate pool tanks, and a twenty-five meter lap pool. Leisure pool is a lazy river, that's kind of in the far back, you can't see it very well. And an oversized spa that could double as a physiotherapy, physiotherapy area, and each tank is provided with a barrier-free access ramp. So if you look to the side of the pool, you see, almost looks like another length of the pool, and that is where a wheelchair could go down, in with its mobility paired, or someone could hang on to the sides and go down. There also, you can see the playhouse is not part of the pool, but you can see it right at the very back, it's a two-story playhouse, so the windows are open into the pool, but it actually be accessed from the hallway, because it wouldn't be a wet area, it'd be a dry area. And you can see the stands up there that can oversee if we have a big event going on. Yeah, I think that's, that's about, uh, that's about it for the pool.
Question?
Sure, oh, I'm sorry.
Um, I'm sure with the architects, they could provide more 3D renderings of the entire facility? Especially the other aspects of the pool, because those were, there's a lot of evolution to that part of the building, yet we can't even see, you know, the lazy river, for example. They must have that, or, or even, um, a 3D walkthrough of the entire building. They must have that capability.
Possibly, yeah. I can, for a million dollars.
Yeah, that's good. Like, like, we, they, they should be able to give us a, a full walkthrough tour of this facility.
Yeah, to, to a certain degree, not everything is totally finished, like, in other words, in order for us to, like, to do this, we are actually selecting the paint colors, we're selecting the light fixtures, we're selecting everything that goes in there in order for them to, to do this like real time, with all the costs, everything is dependent on here, so the only thing that's added on is when they throw in some people or whatever, so every single thing that's in these are detailed onto our actual design.
Oh, so.
So we're all connected to something, so every room, everything, like, if we wanted to change a room, we had to, um, like, designate it as another number and pull in a different area, like, everything is like, you don't lose anything.
But they only fleshed out certain images with full color and, but, but even a, even like a wireframe walkthrough too, or something, right?
We can do, like, they, they've done walkthroughs, um, not completely, but partially, like, where we've been on Zoom, so they could do something like that if we requested it.
Yeah.
Yeah. It gives you a better idea, because when they were asking for what renderings we wanted to, they, they did a bird's eye view, where we could go in and look and then decide, okay, that that's a good view.
Because I'd like to see the playhouse and the far end of the pool area.
Okay.
Nice, yeah.
And, um, the architects, um, just to be clear, were paid four hundred and fifty thousand?
And?
Well, I thought you said, I thought a different number was thrown out there, maybe I misheard.
Oh, you just said for a million.
Oh, no, 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 no.
Million dollars for a 3D.
When he wants 3D rendering, I say, yeah, for another million dollars.
Oh, I'm sorry, I just.
No, I shouldn't, that, that should be, I don't know, I just see, like, even, like, realtors are doing it for selling outs.
Right, right.
You know, it's a, it's, and now, now they're, of course, taking pictures of an existing building.
They're just taking panoramic pictures.
It's a hassle, but it will be extra cost, I mean, if it's not part of what the original package is. If you request something over and above that they haven't made, then we'll have to pay for that.
Yeah, I just think in this, with the technology now, that's, those things are.
It's, it's worth, it definitely can follow up, it's, it doesn't ever risk to ask anything, so, yeah.
The price is right.
So next, um, slide, please. So now we're looking over our, um, our field house, and, um, there would be three regulation-sized basketball courts, and, um, with enough space between, uh, each court for mobile bleacher systems that can be right on the floor, um, as well as we have the tilt and roll bleachers, um, that can be installed in the, uh, in the upper part. And there's also room enough that when we don't need to have those tilt and roll bleachers, that there's area that can be used for stretching and fitness, like upstairs on the track. The roof over this space, again, is that celestry glazing, and so that gives a lot of natural light to the gym during the day. And there's, they'll be using daylight harvesting, which also saves on operational costs, so that ensures that the lights automatically turn off when there's sufficient light, natural light available, so that'll automatically happen from natural light. So they said that night or during shorter winter days, the glazing will glow from within and become an illuminated beacon to the community. The panels are employed polycarbonate sheets which provide the cute lighting, and the gate, the need for window shades, or other methods for their control, which is really good, because I've been to places where you've had glare coming through from the sun when you're playing sports, it's just like, so, it's good. Next rendering, please. So most of our spectator seating is on the second floor. This balcony seating provides excellent views of the ice surface, and one side, the other side is, it's located above the dressing rooms. And we have a similar arrangement on the other side of the rink. And raising the bleachers allows for the fully glazed wall between the rink and the main public corridor. The rink activities help animate the public spaces, and the space under these bleachers could be used for informal standing view when you're going down the main corridor. The building's structural system is designed so that the columns don't interfere with the ice surface from the seating areas. Wish I could see what you're seeing, I've just got like a little picture, but very nice, the renderings are really, yeah. Next slide, please. Are you looking at the track?
Yeah.
Okay. So you can really see the open-to below areas, how they provide a visual interest. So those are, they're not actually, they're input with the, that type of substance they have in between, but anyways, they also help with separation functions, so in this case, the running track and the gymnasium space are separated from the corridor, but they provide access to the multi-shared, the shared multipurpose and meeting rooms, without the need for the full height partitions. Again, they have the same glazing at the roof level, and that allows the daylight into those interior spaces. To maintain the level of background noise, there's acoustic treatments that need to be implemented in all areas of the facility. Acoustic metal deck for the roof, acoustic ceilings and sound baffles will be incorporated. Soft surfaces for the running track and upper quarters will help dampen the impact, so we've used that recreational flooring, a running track floor, right across the entire track, it's not just on the track, so that helps with softening impact in the noises. So energy savings. Next slide, please. So I can't read my slide, hopefully you can read your slide, but I...
No, I can.
Do you can read the TV? No? Ah, okay, I'll send this up to council afterwards. So basically, the proposed design complies with the national standard, to the point that we exceed by 17%, which is really, which is really good news. That's going to help very much for the grant that we're currently applying for, for the green community infrastructure building. Some of the reasons that we've kept is, again, the triple-glazed curtain walls that we're using, condensing boilers with low temperature, with hot water loops for heating. We're also using the heat from the ice plant into the, into the pool for heating. We have 70% sensible ventilation heat recovery and, and hot gas reheat system on the, in the pool, in the HVAC unit, so all those have helped to increase in areas, there's areas that we still, we're either at zero, or we're not up to the 2017 standard, and I have asked the architects to have a look at that, because a lot of times, it's, it would be an increase in capital cost, but I said I'd like to, I think it'd be worthwhile to see anyways, so depending what it is, so we could save in energy. And I can send this up to the council. So project status, so providing that council accepts this, the design development tonight. We have the website updated already, ready to go, so that'll be so the average person won't struggle, like everyone did here today, you can go to the website, see the schematics, see the designs, and you can make them bigger and that kind of thing, and get a better look at the detail. So that's behind the scenes, ready to go, it hasn't been put out yet, so that'll be done tomorrow. We have the opportunity to have another consultation with the architects on the 24th. I was hoping to involve the stakeholders, so the ones that were involved in the couple meetings already, to send an email out to them, to ask them if they have any technical questions. So we're not looking at change in the design, but if they want to know about the emergency generators, if they want to know more about the ceiling panels we're using, that type of thing, then the prime architects will have those consultants there, so they would need to bring in the electrical engineer, or the HVAC engineer, that type of thing, and have a huge forum with those questions, be allowed to ask, and people can give feedback at that time, so it'd be wonderful, the council would like to attend that too, and also to the Denny Talk Council, I'd extend that to them too, so it'd be like an open meeting, hopefully the questions ahead of time, and we have like a full panel there to answer any questions. Following that, then, get funding, and we're ready to, project will start for the spring of 2022. So basically, I guess what I'm looking tonight is any questions on the design, and then I was just requesting the council to, we're recommending the development design that is prepared by Safari, be accepted as presented, not exceed the 88 million.
Counsel? What are your thoughts? Yes?
I really appreciate the presentation, it's, it's very well done, so thank you for that, even with all those technical difficulties.
Sorry about that.
No, it, it's really exciting to see all the, the technology and the new, new types of building material and, and the cost, or the energy efficient parts to it, so that's exciting too. I'm, I'm ready to make a motion to, if we accept this, this design.
Is that your motion?
Yeah.
Alternative one?
Counsel, anybody else have questions? Counselor Welkley?
No, I'm on board with Counselor Jessman. I would say, though, that we do need to cap it, the, I mean, the alternative one is the one I like, so, part of your mind?
Yeah. Mike?
I loved it, I didn't need it, I've been pushing it around town to lots of people already, so...
Oh, I agree.
Yeah, I'm happy with it.
Okay.
I've had lots of interest, lots of interest in it over the last couple weeks, and it's just, let's try to improve.
Yes?
I just do, I do have a question, I know we talked about this last time, Ruth, maybe you can correct, so with, we're seeing it already with huge increases in, in building projects across the board, and we don't know what the future holds for us, but as we move forward, this design would change if our costs exceed and we have to make adjustments, correct? Like, it's easy to make those adjustments and...
We'd have to make a decision at some point.
Right.
So, I mean, an example would be if, say, like October, we had 60 million, and council was confident that we would be able to get the rest, or they weren't confident and wanted to cap it there, then we could go back to the prime architect, and we could come up with, you know, what can we do to make this design so we can fit within that cost, and they can make the modifications, and council would have to make some hard decisions, is that when you lock off the curling rink, is that when you take off part of the pool, do you go out on a limb and try and increase your funding? And you'd want to do that before you start construction documents and put it out to tender, because, you know, that in itself is, you know, you're looking well over $10 million, so you don't want to keep redoing those, so...
Yep, no, thank you.
It's very important for the public to know that this, just because we're agreeing to 88 million, that that's not a hard, fast figure, and if we don't get the funding, we don't build the facility the way it's designed. We're trying to get the funding. When's our next meeting?
Actually, Madam Mayor, Director Wolf and I met with the group from Ottawa again on Thursday. There's a number of things going forward, Ruth is working on a grant application, and at this time, the DNI are assisting with that, so we're very positive, that could be a considerable sum of money. We're looking right now, setting up the meetings with Minister Schweitzer and Minister Taves, and the Ottawa group's still working on setting up meetings there, so things are moving along, of course, we're facing summer break really quickly here, which could put a hold on things.
I'm very interested in having a meeting with Minister Schweitzer to see where that 365 million's allocated before it disappears.
Well, that's, that's just this year, so there's maybe 365 next year, too.
Thank you very much for your presentation, it's a beautiful facility, I think it would be just a beautiful thing to have in high level for the people, and I hope we can get the funding. So with Counselor Jessman's motion, I'll call a question, all in favor. Carrie?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, the next two items, Ms. Gavin will be walking you through, and I believe she's still online.
Good evening. Any questions for Ms. Gavin?
I'll move second reading.
You'll move second?
And then we're going to vote.
I asked if there was any questions, Ms. Gavin? Okay, well, does anyone else? No? All right, they quit, they, no, what?
Don't move.
No? Okay, so the motion, move first reading, or second reading, all in favor?
Sorry. One? No, no.
Those opposed?
We froze it.
Madam Mayor, I'm bylaws to the table.
Jan's halfway to even.
Yeah, I got all squared up. No, I was...
It's very, very hard to defeat a motion in its negative. We will go on to the RFD, to the proposed bylaw. Is there any questions of Ms. Gavin? Could I have someone make a motion then?
I'll make the motion for first reading.
Okay. First, July 5th? Is that a council meeting, do?
Yep, that'd be your last one before August.
Okay.
For, for alternative one, July 5th.
Okay, all in favor? Carrie? Thank you. Good evening.
Very good reception from that fountain top, by the way.
Yeah. Say hi to Hamel for me.
I assume.
All right, so the next one is 13.2, a boiler replacement.
Madam Mayor, Director Wolf will address the next two items on the agenda.
Okay. So we've had some heat issues at the pool for the last months, the good thing is, is that this has happened during, we've had very nice weather outside, so we haven't had the use of our second boiler, we've been running off our, our main boiler, which is a really old boiler as well, and kind of using a heat exchanger to heat the pool, so redirecting the building heat into the pool to keep it up to the temperature it needs to be at. With the warmer weather in the last couple of weeks, we've finally retained that. So our secondary boiler, which was the new one actually, it's only been in use for about four or five years, the heat exchanger inside it was burnt right out, I think it's due to the saltwater going through it, so we're looking at getting a boiler that's going to run on glycol, and using a separate titanium, titanium, titanium heat exchanger to, to run the, the pool water through. So the, the cost of that is $33,000, and proposing that we take that out of general reserve. The alternative is, once we hit the cold weather, we wouldn't be able to... The alternative is, once we hit the cold weather, we wouldn't be able to keep the heat within the pool, so we'd have to shut down.
If the existing boiler's over only four years old, is there no warranty issue here? They knew it was for a salt water use, did they not?
Apparently, when they put it in, they had said that it wouldn't last that much longer because of what we're using it for, from my understanding. So, it's not currently the warranty.
Are we dealing with the same supplier?
I don't think so much it was the supplier, but it was, we had choices for, my understanding is we had choices from an engineer, different ideas of what could be used. And this was probably not the way to go, the one that we chose to go, go with, so.
Did she miss?
Well, it could have been, that was what they were looking at. Because we're switching to glycol, then, you know, you have to have a circulation pump and you have to have, there's like extra expenses, so I don't know whether...
So is this a total expense?
Yes. Yeah. I have an estimate in front of me, so.
Counsel, what's your wish?
Is this second boiler, if we start construction on the new facility, will we be able to transfer it over into the new facility? Or are we going to buy it then?
I don't think so because of the heat methods we're using in the new place, because we're taking the heat off the ice plant and using, like, like different... I mean, definitely, we can look at all that and everything, but we may end up being able to sell some of these. I don't know.
Put a pool in the backyard. I'm not putting a pool in my backyard, it's not big enough. I don't think I can build it.
Well, thirty-three thousand. Technically, reserves are meant for things that we can't, don't foresee. So, I would suggest that we give the thirty-three thousand.
Yeah, it'd really be in service.
We didn't quibble over eighty-eight million.
Well, this would be in service for a couple of years.
Well, we don't, in the late in time, like, we started building in the, in the, in the spring. You know, it could be two, three years. You know, the pool might be the last thing to go, so for sure, we don't know we're guaranteed to keep running with this for, until we get a different facility.
What are they anticipating life span of this water would be in its present use?
My understanding would be closer to ten to fifteen years at least, because we're not running the salt water, we're using the glycol instead. It was the salt water that, it wasn't able to take that. You can see, I can send pictures, the insides all pretty much brought it out, so.
No, I'm just thinking if it was going to be fairly short term, perhaps it would be in operation, but then the capital, but... Doesn't matter. I'm prepared to move the recommendation.
Anyone else have anything to add? All in favor? Carrie?
Thank you.
Now it's Carrie's turn?
No. Oh, Terry.
I wasn't paying attention.
So the next one is Canada Day.
So, you do have a, should have a full day of fun there. So we're starting out with Canada Day, starting off the Color Run that's hosted by the Running Club. And we haven't had one here before, so pretty excited about it. Run them in other places and they're a lot of fun, so we hope to see families and lots of people out for that. We're still going to be having the parade. It's going to be not as long as last year, and it's not going to be the route that we've done previously. So it's a longer, a longer route with lots of places where people can park. We can hope to encourage people to stay in their cars or buy their cars so we can try and keep our, our numbers that are from congregating in too large groups. The opening ceremonies, I understand that we're already starting to work on them, so those will be done ahead of time and then posted on Facebook so that we don't, again, have people congregating all together in one, one park. And then, all at the same time, between one and five, we're running events at Santana Park, Canfor Park, Jubilee Park, and the museum. All kind of like different themes. Santana Park is our water park, so the splash park is almost ready to go right now. So the splash park going, we have water fights and water guns are putting out sponges with water pools to throw at each other. Catrefe Park, we're going to have, it's like the seventies theme, so it's like tie dye shirts, flower crowns, like people bring a blanket, sit down with your family, kind of thing, enjoy things for a couple hours, have bubbles, a hula loop contest. Jubilee Park, we're going to have kite flying kits, wine chime, wood chime kits. Hook that wide in there.
Sign me up for that one.
We're going to have bike decorating and mini parade, so because we're not encouraging, or we're discouraging people entirely from walking in the regular parade, this will give the kids and people with strollers, that kind of thing, the ability to have a little mini parade, and that'll be around the asphalt path in Jubilee Park. The kite flying kids ones, you get them, encourage people to go across the street to the fields by the arena and fly the kites. And the museum is kind of the old, all the old types of games. We've got Corolla games and different outdoor games, three-legged races, potato sack races, and that sort of thing. And we're also going to be running the basketball tournament. And then Jubilee Park will be running, we're working on getting different people to participate in the concert. We have quite a few people booked already, and that'll be running from four till eight. So, we're asking council to do several different things. One thing that we would like is we're going to have a balloon passport and prize station located at the museum. So the passports are, we want to see people going to every park and encouraging people to be rotating, so we're not getting big crowds at every park. So the passports, council will be handing them out, and then people will be going to all the different parks and getting them signed off by a staff member. And there'll also be a prize location there too, so the people that are winning the different prizes at the museum, they come and council will handle those prizes, and we'll give them free balloons out to everyone. So we're requiring three volunteers for that. We also like judges for the bike parade, so two or three mayor, councilors to, to be volunteers. And we'd be happy to have you come to the main stage at Jubilee Park, announce the winners for Fix Your Fence, for the main parade, for the bike parade, the grand prize for those passports, because everything will go into prizes. We're going to have one big prize, a bunch of small prizes for the passports that are completed. And also assisting with any of the parks. So if you want to get involved in the water play, or you'd like to be involved in the wind play and, and help hand out kites, any of those types of things. So, what we're asking council to do is if you can provide your, your availability to Jenna Clark, the development manager, by email, and then suggest to her what you would like to be assigned to. She'd be happy to assign you all for the entire day, whatever you'd like.
I won't be there, but I don't want to be assigned anywhere. Because I'd like to go to all of them.
Sorry, how do we sign up?
Email Jenna.
Jenna?
So, like, you're going to have staff, town staff there as well, right?
Yes, yes.
So you want three at the museum all day?
Well, from one to five, that's all that, that one's open, so. And we can work with council, so if you just want to be there for a couple hours, you want to be in a different park, we'll have, there'll be staff at all the parks. So, it'll be up to, we can be quite flexible. I really would like to have, to help with the judging of the little kids' bike parade and have council lead them up. Is that will be the start of our music? Is having a bike parade come up and then the music will start then? So it would be nice to have, I'm going to be there as well. I've got a, I've got a costume. So I'm going to be there as well, keeping the kids left on.
I think administration should judge.
We totally...
We want, we want the people to like council.
So if we make a mistake, they don't vote for us as voters?
I will judge.
I don't like judging. What's up? You'll be a judge?
Sure.
You'll break the hearts of those little children.
So you won't be here? Won't be a judge.
Just unless anybody has any other questions.
Where are we flipping them, or is what they are?
We're not allowed to.
Well, we're, we're not, we're, we're encouraging the food vendors. Like, I think it's been a rough year and a half for a lot of our restaurants and everything, so we thought we'd encourage them to have, helping with permits and to have vendors help. And if not, to give maybe discounts to people, encourage people to go out to the different restaurants and have something to eat. So we thought for the first time, we actually would not be offering food, so that'll be a bit different this year. So, we're not a hundred percent if it's going to be phase three or not, so we're trying to go with, you know, keeping the fairly sizable groups and trying to keep as least contact as we can. It's so hard to know.
Just sign up.
Good for you.
Just did it right now.
Did you get your time sheets and all the time now?
I just sent them in today. I sent my name one in today.
You're two months...
It's halfway through the month.
Yeah. Madam Mayor, I'll just be sending all available members of council to help up with Canada Day.
All in favor? Carrie?
I like the idea with the local vendors supplying the food, that's a great idea. Today has been a hard journey for them this year, and so that'd be great support for them.
Yeah, I don't know what kind of, you know, if we'll get a lot of participation or how they are, but I just thought for, for this year, we would just do it a bit different. People have always appreciated the free pancake breakfast and the free hot dogs and everything, so it'll be a bit different this year, but it's a shorter, shorter day, too, so hopefully it goes well.
All right, thank you very much. See you at Canada Day.
I'll just, Counselor Forrest, can let him go, I seen one chance.
That wasn't fast, though. No water, no... All right, is there anything in correspondence for information that anyone wants to discuss? Like maybe Bill C. twenty-one? And us having to make bylaws about carrying guns?
I'm in favor of a bylaw that allows us to carry guns.
Yeah, but we're going to have to create them then.
That's fine.
No. So Bill C., C. twenty-one's to amend the acts and to make sure that, or to make it so that councils...